All right, we are going to bring the Colfax City Council Meeting of August 13th, 2025 to session, please. And would you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. City Clerk, can you please take role?
Councilmember Burris, present Councilmember Douglas, Councilmember Hilberg.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim McCully.
Here. All right, thank you. Kim, may I have a motion to approve the agenda order?
I move approval.
All right, all in favor?
Second.
All right.
Hi.
All right, our agenda. Our statement of conflict of interest, do we have any new conflict of interest from the council? No? I think it was more than one, but it was still under 200. I think you're good for that's right. I think we're good. All right. Our consent calendar, all items on the consent calendar are considered routine in nature and will be approved by one blanket motion with the council vote unless a council member or member of the public request an item to be pulled from the consent for discussion. Items pulled will be addressed after the council completes the consent calendar vote and will require a separate motion. Are there any items the council or the public would like to pull from the consent calendar?
No.
All right, nope. All right, so all in favor of the consent calendar?
Aye.
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 Actually, I forgot, I'm sorry. May I, supposed to have them, there we go. I'm gonna back up, we didn't pull anything, so we're good. All right. Trying to follow my highlighted notes.
But anytime if you want to back up, you can back up.
All right. All right, so and as a reminder to the council and the public, our meeting is being livestreamed, please sure to speak clearly into the microphones for optimal audio recording so everybody can see you. And then when you're at the microphone, push the button so the green light shows on. And agency reports, it looks like it's gonna be a Cal Fire show all night long. Oh, no, there isn't one, okay. Sorry, I don't have my glasses on, he was in a dark uniform, so it's gonna be all you?
No.
Now they're gonna. So you're just gonna sit here and not report? All right. Okay.
All right, good evening. Clint Seaver Battalion Chief for Placer County Fire, Cal Fire. For Station 30 here in Colfax, last month, we had 116 total calls, 27 of those were vegetation fires. We had three structure fires, three vehicle fires, and a total of 36 medical aides, with a few miscellaneous calls mixed in there for calls of service. For us, we are fully staffed, we do locally have the ponderosa fire that is going on up in Yuba County, that is fully contained, and we expect all resources to be released off that in the next two days. So we are fully staffed with our local resources, engines, and aircraft. Other than that, that's the end of our report unless you guys have any questions. What's that?
Any of those three vehicles.
Our commercial vehicle fires, I don't have a full statistic on, on how many we've run, I'm being asked by Alta, and I can provide that information for the board as well if you'd like for how many commercial vehicle fires we've ran over the past year. So, once I get that info.
I was driving down I-80 the other day, and a couple of big rigs just drove right on by. So disturbing.
Yeah, I noticed that CHP has been very diligent in policing those vehicles with hot brakes, and they have been watching them for speed as well and pulling them over when need be, so.
On that note, just while we're on the topic of big rigs, I had brought up previously, I think Ron, before you came on, that I wanted us to put together an ordinance, we could either do it in cooperation with the county, or we could do it on our own regarding the consequence for ignition of a fire due to, you know, vehicle on 80 failing to stop at a brake check, basically negligent fires. So we had discussed a ordinance to basically ticket people and make sure that there were hefty fines and penalties to encourage people to actually stop at the brake checks. And we had discussed coordinating with the county on this to make sure that, you know, we were all aligned since obviously we only have a very small blip of 80. So I'd love to reopen that conversation where we go with it, I don't know, but due to the timing of our staffing changes, we weren't able to finish that conversation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, we can take it via email, or if it gets up and working, just give us a wave down and we'll backtrack to you, no problem. Thank you. Alrighty, do we have any nonprofits? Aaron, come on up.
Good evening, Erin Newington with the Historic Colfax Downtown Association. I wanted to report in on two things. One is, we hosted the Colfax Bazaar, it turned out to be a fabulous event, we anticipate about 1,000 people came to town. We were highlighted on Good Day Sacramento, so we're super grateful for Cody Stark for that highlight. Our vendors reported strong sales, downtown businesses all increased traffic. We monitored their parking lot next to the Fruit Exchange Building, and that pretty much stayed full all day, which was awesome. And I think the really good thing about that particular event is we didn't have to close down all the streets, and so it was really cool to be able to bring that many people to town without having to inconvenience the regular Main Street businesses, so that was a win for us. And we are looking to do a new event November 8th and keep that rolling, it's, it's pretty much designed as a recurring event, and we already are expecting twice the size as last time, so we're trying to figure out location logistics. The really exciting thing that I wanted to report is that as the Downtown Association, we applied for the Levitt Amp Grant Series. It really was a shot in the dark, to be honest, I had some people outside of Colfax kind of giggle when I said that I was working on this grant, because it's a very hard one to achieve. It's a national grant, it provides free concert grant money to cities over a three-year period. But what I always have said since we started this organization was, we really feel like our job is to tell Colfax's story in a way to attract these funds. And it paid off because we made it into the public round of voting, we beat out hundreds of cities across the nation, we were in the top 100 of all cities chosen, which to me is huge for Colfax. And we're super proud of the work that we've done and the opportunity that is sitting in front of Colfax right now. So last year, just to give you a perspective, that made it to the final round, 33 cities. I would say. And so basically, this particular grant will give us up to $40,000 a year in matched funds over a three-year period. And we are to host seven to 10 concerts per year, it has to be a professional concert series. Part of the process of doing this grant was to get letters of from people that are willing to help. We have two professional music production people that have written beautiful letters on our behalf and are willing to jump in, it's not something that I would try and take on myself, I don't really have, you know, experience at a professional stage level. And so one company has worked on the concert series in Truckee and in Tahoe City, so they have ample experience there, the other one is contracted with the Gold Country Fairgrounds, and so she has ample experience as well. So, let's see. So, this is a huge deal, obviously tourism, we're gonna get tens of thousands of people to Colfax over the course of the series. It's, I wrote the grant so that the event happens at the Depot Park, which I think is huge exposure for that project. And to bring people downtown without clogging up Main Street again, so that's really good. Obviously, there's an economic benefit to having that many visitors in town. And it is a matched fund grant, so there is gonna be some investment in our part, part of the process of applying for this grant, I had to design all of the graphics as if this event was happening, I had to come up with all the marketing as if it was happening, I had to create a budget on how we were gonna pay for it and create match funds opportunities. So, in addition to writing all the grant portion of the program, it had a lot of extra components to it that went into this, so there was a lot of thought, basically, on how we could make this happen as a city. So I know that the city does have limited funds, and I'm not here to ask for a handout at this point, but I really feel like this could be a big investment for Colfax, the city of Colfax, to participate in raising some of those funds. Obviously, we have an entire sponsorship packet developed that I had to do as part of the grant, so that's all figured out, what that could look like, but I feel like it would be a huge benefit to Colfax and give us a great return on investment. So what I am asking for, for help, and I know I'm not on the agenda, so I'm just gonna throw this out there, is, one of the big part of this grant is to show that we have community support. I think overall, in general, we do have community support for something like this, and I definitely can rally the troops, but it's really important, like, from this is, this has to be a collaborative effort, like, we've gotten us this far, but our association can't take it all the way, I would say, we need the help from the city, we need the help from the local nonprofits, and we need the help from the community. And so there is a public voting session, or dates, of September 5th through the 15th, and that's basically where people would text Colfax to a certain number and be registered to vote, or they could go online and register to vote, and I have an entire plan designated to get those votes. We actually received a mini grant from the Levitt Foundation already for $1,500 to help us pay for the promotion of getting those votes. But I always am of the impression that if you can get a group of people together, you can always come out with a better product than one person just running the show, and so I would gather some kind of community workshop. Involves the city, have me present this proposed plan, and then brainstorm it and see how we can make it better. See. And any help I could get around promotion at a city level would be so appreciated, because I think it's important when everybody's watching and deciding where those, that money's gonna go, seeing us come together as a group is gonna be imperative. So this opportunity is in front of us, I think we should take it and run with it, and I would love your help.
Thank you, Erin.
I'm in, I love music. Can these concerts, are they standalone, or can they be connected with something else?
Meaning, like, two events running side by side, or something along that lines?
Or together, I'm just curious, because you said, mentioned seven to 10 concerts a year, that, that's pretty busy, right? We have other stuff going on, maybe we could help some of the other events as well, I'm not sure if that organization would accept that, but I'm just curious.
What I have found in this venture of the Downtown Association is that collaboration is huge, I am all for it. I think that one event doesn't need to be running downtown by itself, I've looked at multiple things on our calendar where we can bring two events on one day, that brings twice the amount of people and gives people twice the amount of things to do, so I'm sure there has to be some compartmentalization to a degree because of the grant funds, but running simultaneous events would not bother me from my perspective.
What's the total amount of money?
$120,000 over three years.
So $40,000 available for concerts each year, essentially.
It's matched funds, though.
Yeah, no, I get it.
But it's, it's a significant amount of money to, to leverage.
Can we go ahead and request a workshop be scheduled now, or do we need to wait till the end with, go to the order? Yeah, can we look at scheduling, I know your voting is right around the corner, so I'd like to see if we can schedule a workshop so that way all the council can participate, if we can squeeze it in for next week, because I know you don't have a lot of time till your voting window.
Yes, ma'am.
So if our.
What dates next week work for you?
Yeah, what works for them, right? There, there's more of you than me. Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm good Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, any one of those would work for me, so if we can get a workshop on either one of those days, I don't know what your schedule looks like, Trinity. I know, it's hard to think about that. Okay. But we'll, we'll, we'll get something on the calendar for next week, if that works, if you guys are open to that, and that way we can.
I really appreciate it.
That way we can participate in it and be part of the conversation.
That is the whole point of it, and I really do appreciate that, because I, let's leverage the heck out of this. Times, and this would put us on the map in a big way.
Early, okay. So Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday, is that early enough, or does it need to be Monday or Tuesday for you?
Monday or Tuesday would be better.
Okay.
Wednesday would be better.
Okay. All right, so Ron's got his notes and he'll pull us all, and then we'll get back to you as soon as we can with a date and time, and I mean, I would assume you would like to do it in the evening, so that way more people can attend, so the six-ish time.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll have Ron get back to you as soon as we can get that scheduled.
Sweet.
So, awesome, thank you.
Do I?
Go right ahead.
Thank you.
I like music, music is, there are many kinds of music, and I'm sort of, so I have two part question, one is, at what point are decisions made about what sorts of music are involved in this? Second, are, is this focused on amplified music, acoustic music, both? And third, if it is focused on whatever kind of music it is, is it focused entirely on popular music, or might there be also other kinds of genres, such as jazz or classical music? If that's a pretty good question, to answer now, I'm just, I'm curious as to when that would come out.
Scheduling would occur, or further planning would occur when we know we win, I would say, but the goal is to bring a variety of different type of music, and one of the stipulations of this grant is it has to be a professional touring band. And so, those can range anywhere from 1,500 up, based on my research, so these would be very the good thing is, these are, these would be successful bands that bring in their own audience on their own, which helps us fill the crowd, but they, they're professionals and they know what they're doing, and then the goal would be to have that, a wide variety of music available.
Thank you, Erin. All right, and I don't think we have any other of our nonprofits here, and we don't have any presentations or public hearings, so we will open it up to public comment, if anybody has any public, come right on. Good, but you gotta come up here, because if oh, fantastic, so come right on up and give us a report. Yeah.
Good evening, Deputy Boyer, Placer County Sheriff's Office, here on behalf of Station Commander Sergeant Williams, unfortunately, he's on vacation tonight, wasn't able to make it. Nothing significant to report from our agency, the statistics for the month, we had a total of 166 incidents in the city, of which 26 reports were taken. States here that 14 of those were designated as transient-related, though it doesn't say what involvement they were necessarily. The breakdown of the calls, there, there were 22 suspicious activity calls, 12 disturbance calls, which could include domestic violence or other loud noise type calls, alarm calls, burglary alarms, silent robbery alarms, anything like that. And a total of 33 traffic stops were made, with just a handful that were actually given a citation, most of them were issued warnings, or they were cleared, what we call cleared by contact, so maybe they were stopped for one of these calls related to the calls, and then they determined that it didn't require necessarily an arrest or something like that, so. That is all we have to, to report from on our front. Any questions?
Council have any questions? Public? No, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we will go ahead and do our council reports, so Kim, do you have anything to report for us?
Okay. Like most of us here, I attended the Placer councils, and the Police Chief of Rockland gave a talk on teenagers riding electric bikes and scooters, and we don't have that problem here, well, a minor problem, but okay, and then I also attended the bazaar, it was nice to see that they had a good turnout. Then I attended in Auburn, Placer County Economic Development Board meeting, where there was a talk given on tourism, how to promote tourism in Placer County. And then I attended, like, three of the five of us council members were up at the hotel on Dutch Flat. Getting some good vibrations from the hotel owner about what he's gonna do here. And so it was nice to see that we had such a good turnout up at Dutch Flat. I kidnapped two people locally and took them up to Dutch Flat to make sure we had good attendance. And then, what else did I do? Well, that's enough, thank you. Yeah, I too went up to the Dutch Flat Hotel, it was a, a great sacrifice, we were required to judge his food and beverages, and, and we all did a fine job. Anyway, he's a positive guy, and I think he's ready to move forward, so we just gotta try to find a way to work it out, because that, that's the destination type of business that draws people. And he's drawing them to Dutch Flat, and I think he could draw them here, too. And other than that, let's see. As usual, I went to the VFW breakfast, I enjoy going to that, supporting the local community, but no meetings this time.
Uh, let's see here, so the two things I wanted to bring up was in relationship with the bazaar and with the Fruit Exchange in general, you know, it's sort of a a really, a gem of Colfax, I think, you know, when you notice people doing artistic work in town, when they're filming, when they're doing photography, you'll notice that they do a lot of it over by the tracks, and especially by the Fruit Exchange, and it's a really under, underutilized area, and I think a big part of the reason it's an underutilized area is because, have you ever seen the parking lot? Or the road, or any of that area over there? We had talked a while back about paving Railroad Street, and we had gotten very, very far into the negotiations with Union Pacific, and really where we got hung up was the, the spur. And when we had talked to them about the spur, they, they gave us an offer, I won't call it what I called it in private, but they, they had offered to let us do an undercrossing. Yeah, so I think you get the gist of what kind of an offer that was. We have different people in place, they have different people in place, I'd like to reapproach that conversation so that, I understand it's not an overnight process, but if we can start looking at a long-term plan, or a short-term plan, or even intermediary plan, to try to get that paved, that would be a really huge deal, because when we have traffic coming down 174, clogging that main intersection, we need a second route to get people to different onramps onto the freeway in case of emergency. It, it's pretty critical for emergency evacuation plans, and that leads me to my second topic, emergency plans. We as a city have depended on the county for years to be responsible for our emergency plans, and we have seen how poorly that can go, multiple times, and I don't mean that in the sense of our sheriff's department or our fire department, because Placer County Fire Department and the sheriff's office do a fantastic job, that is not my concern. My concern is when the city has other types of issues, like the winter storm, where it's a power outage type concern, or, you know, had a catastrophe with our sewer, we don't have now, they give us a control structure to deal with it without relying on county OES to really run the show. And I think that's hugely problematic when we have very specific infrastructure that they have very little knowledge on or anything to do with. So I think it would be very wise for us to prioritize putting together our ICS plan, making sure that, you know, whether it be our city staff, or additional persons from the public that we appoint into emergency positions, members of council should all have an emergency position. It's very important, because one of the things that we observed during the, you know, river fire and during the sorry, during the winter storm, yeah, the, the snow magedons, was a lot of people trying to help and not knowing what to do, and then stepping on each other's toes, and there was a lot of duplicative effort kind of leading in different directions. And thankfully, we were able to all get on the same page pretty quick and let it go smoothly once we got the kinks worked out, but moments like that of miscommunication, sometimes you don't have time for that. So it would be really great to, you know, get everybody into, the FEMA ICS training online is free, I think we should, you know, get people going through that. And then if we can, you know, have some additional training go through, and then actually put together, what is our structure, what is our plan? You know, who is gonna be working directly with county OES to make sure that they are not short of any information they need, they've got all the details and specifics, and they're able to actually work with us and use us, not have us be hindering them at every step, because I'll tell you, I had to go to lunch with representation from our sheriff's department, and, or our sheriff's office, I apologize, it's so rude, I keep doing that. Our sheriff's office, and our fire department, and, you know, the county, and I had to have a very uncomfortable conversation with them, where they asked me very nicely to please get my team under control. So I would like to not have that experience again, and mind you, this was a few years back, we've got a whole different team. But, you know, innocent goodwill does not mean good results, so I want to make sure that the intents match the consequences, and, and we're doing right by the people who live here and pay a lot of tax money to expect better, so. On that note, you know, going back to tax money, we've been talking a lot this evening about nonprofits. And, you know, we've substantially increased the amount of money over the last couple of years that we specifically allocate to nonprofits. And I do not disagree with that decision one bit, I think it is very important that we make sure our nonprofits have a lifeline. But I do think that we're starting to see that that is becoming a bigger and bigger thing that is gonna require more support, and does make things really complicated when you're in a very small town with very few people who tend to wear multiple hats. Carolyn, looking at you, you wear a lot of hats, and what I would really like to see before it becomes a problem, before, you know, we end up in a little bit of a different situation later where there is a conflict of interest, because right now currently there is not, and thank you Connor for the email earlier today, we had a little conversation, because I don't know how it started, but we, we had a good follow-up on it. I think a good way to potentially mitigate that is Placer County Community Foundation. When we needed assistance, and they were trying to help us financially and help our citizens directly financially, they put me in contact directly with the Placer Community Foundation, who they were able to have all different organizations send funds to, and they were able to determine, you know, what amount of money they were able to provide, in whether it was gas gift cards for people, laundry gift cards, just stuff to get people through the very extended period of time where there were outages. Because PG&E was supplying money to the county to help all these communities, but the county was not directly within their power able to sit down and meet with people and hand out grants that quickly. So by working with this Placer Community Foundation, they were able to do that, we had a similar experience with the river fire, we wanted to give out a grant opportunity for people to get small reimbursements for their evacuation. Well, the problem we had was people had a lack of awareness, people didn't understand the application process, we were only able to give it out to people who lived within the city limits, that, which was kind of ridiculous, given the fact that everybody living in the surrounding bubble is spending tax dollars within our city and contributing to that general fund, and we've got many people on our sewer system who are not within our city limits, which is a whole nother issue for a whole different day. which is a whole nother issue for a whole lot different day. Point being, they're no less part of our community. And if we want to appropriately serve everybody and have a lot more opportunity and have a separation between the council and the actual distribution of funds, which I personally, I'd like to get out of the business of deciding who's nonprofit is, you know, worthy of how much. I think we should really consider having our own Colfax Community Foundation as a separate 501(c)(3) entity that we directly work with. Perhaps in the bylaws, there's a certain, you know, setup of the board to where we have one to two council members on the board, you know, and and then we're able to still in good faith oversee the dollars that go out of our coffers. But at the same time, we don't have a position where, you know, someone has to recuse themselves on some items and then not on others, like it is quite the yo-yo. So, um, okay. I just talked for way too long, passing it on. Happy to answer any questions.
I think Sean has been working with UP and there's little movements being happened. So that's not dead.
Fantastic.
And we've had some small conversations here and there. So they're happy.
Separately, I'll, I'll reach out to Sean.
Yeah.
Separately, while he's negotiating the politics of that, I'd like to work with staff on trying to see what grants I can go be really annoying about to try to get money. So if he can negotiate the path to yes, I will negotiate the path to the money.
Works for me. But yeah, give him a call. All right.
Oh, I do have that. Thank you. Um, so OES is Office of Emergency Services. Yeah, OES. It's their Office of Emergency Services and ICS is Incident Command System. FEMA, which is the Federal Emergency Management.
Um, and on my calendar, where the meetings for are just starting to kick off, since a lot of them take the July month off, I'd say it was probably my favorite two weeks because we got to go to lots of community events. You know, a bunch of us went to the Taste of India dinner that Paul and the Chamber put on and stopped in at the bazaar and the county dinner. So it was, it was a social two weeks, which was kind of nice. But yeah, meetings kickoff for good, starting this week. I'm going to backtrack because I did ask for public comment earlier, but we turned it over to the sheriff. So did we have any public comment online? No. Okay. And do we have any in here? All right. There we go. All right. City manager.
All right. Uh, when working with Matt and Control Point Engineering to get the SCADA Supervisor Control and Data Acquisition System on track, they're a little behind for some confusion. But they're all up to speed and working diligently now. Been working at the MANDA to help clean up the city webpage. She's doing a great job. Working with Carl on this year's Road and Street Stripping and we're be concentrating, concentrating mostly on North Main Street, getting ready for the upcoming activities. Attended a Railroad Days discussion, a Winter Fest discussion. Been working on some HR issues internally. Attended the Placer County Officials Dinner in Rockland, the Taste of India here at the Community Center. Paul did a fabulous job up there, as did the Chamber of Commerce. And Friday went out and filled some potholes because we're short on staff. We have one person out and another person in light duty. And let's see, and I of course went to the bazaar, was fabulous. Lots of good stuff over there. Maintenance has been, uh, working on irrigation, repairing the ball field, getting that ready for the upcoming season. Lots of education control around the park. And I've been working on vegetation control with the city landfill cap area, getting ready for our annual inspection there, along with filling potholes around the city. And that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Ron. All right. So item eight, our council business. Tonight we have three items for council business. The first item tonight is the Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition at the Wastewater Treatment Facility. Presenting this item is our Chief Plant Operator, Matt Anderson. It's all you, Matt. Woo, SCADA.
Yeah. Hey, so I'm back. So currently our SCADA system, uh, we have two of them and neither one of them was complete. For many, many years, we only have five alarms at the plant. The alarms that we do have are mainly for effluent. So we have.
Is your microphone on?
Yeah.
I can hear it pretty good.
I talk quietly. Sorry.
There you go.
Okay.
Perfect.
Currently are the alarms that we have for the plant are just effluent alarms. We have no pump alarms, no blower alarms, no, I mean literally nothing at the plant. So during our SAF project, Telstar and Control Point were tasked with getting our SCADA system up and running. Telstar couldn't meet the task. So we decided to go with Control Point on a new front to basically give our system the upgrade that it needs. So with this upgrade, it, I'm going to have alarms for basically every single pump in the plant, all the blowers, highs and lows of all the new instrumentation that I've gotten out there. Influent pHs, you know, nitrate, everything that we've violated on in the past will all be included in this. So the thought is Control Point's going to cost about $163,000 to get it complete. We did save in the contract prior to finalization of that $80,000 by taking out the SAF SCADA because that's only going to be used if we ever have to use it during the day. So 163.
The original design in a SCADA system from Control Point was done before Matt and I arrived in the city. And since we've been here, we found multiple deficits in it. That's why we're coming back to you and saying we need to expand the original contract. So we're, so we're asking to amend it tonight for the extra work. There was some savings a little bit, pulling Telstar off, saved us a little over $10,000. And then Matt went through the original SCADA design and removed some things there and that saved us some additional money there. So it's not like we're just adding 163 to it. We're actually have some savings to offset that.
So can I, can I add something for context that it's sort of a factoid? I don't know if a lot of you guys know. So let's say you have a grand solar plant at a wastewater treatment plant. And you decide I'm going to put solar on it and I'd like to interconnect with the utility company. And the utility company says, okay, well, you know, based on the requirements in the state of California and based on the CAISO's requirements and, you know, general good practice when you're interconnecting a system, we do need to have a SCADA recloser at the site. Do you know how much it would cost you to install a SCADA recloser at your site? Well, the base cost is 90,000 before tax and before cost of ownership. By the time you complete that, you're doubling that 90,000, you're at 180,000. So if it's 180,000 for one recloser in electric world, I am really, really happy with 163,000 for this system.
And that's additional money. So it'd be closer to a quarter of mine.
But what we're getting for that, I mean, come on.
But most SCADA systems, uh, like the one in the last one I was at, we estimated the replacement value of that because we were looking at going to the different system was going to be three quarters to a million. Cause you're starting over and it's all program work.
And and think how many devices it takes, think how much, you know, networking it takes. Think about all of the parts to that. I mean, this is a really good, I'm really happy with what you guys have negotiated here.
The one thing that that the biggest part of this that's costing the most is actually discovery and demo of the other systems.
Yeah.
And I will show anybody, they can come out to the plant anytime they want to. And I will show them the rat's nest of electrical wires that we have with no control of the system. I mean, it's, it's lucky I have a good crew and we are on top of it of catching things. We literally had a blower motor fail on us on Thursday last week. No alarm, no nothing. Luckily we were there right when it happened in the morning, got it swapped out, back up and running in two hours, still no alarms. So we, I can't do my job and not violate on off hours when we're on call if I don't know what's crashing.
Yeah. And a further agenda item here, we'll see what the consequences are for us not being in tip top shape. So again.
So that's number one.
Is there a trade off in people's time? I mean, that's a lot of money, you know, even if it's a great deal, it's a lot of money. I'm assuming savings come from that if you're monitoring everything electronically or.
Things like this won't happen.
Yeah.
So currently, because we do not have SCADA, myself and my crew are putting in probably a good 10 hours extra a week, just monitoring.
So there is a trade off. Yeah. Yeah.
We just found that.
So if I may, there'll be a trade off in hours like that. There'll be a trade off in mandatory minimum penalties, which you will see on the next item for, because we didn't have a SCADA system. And then of course there'll be chemical and power savings because the SCADA will be able to optimize the performance of the treatment system.
I'd say we'd probably not only ROI, but probably double, double that at least within a year. I mean, easy, honestly, between the amount of overtime hours, the, the fees right here alone. I mean, it's.
And let's remember, we're generating power now. So our meter's spinning backwards during all daylight hours. So we're seeing, already seeing substantial cost savings there. Unfortunately, we won't get that until the end of the year to the true up. But we can tell that with the meter spinning backwards all day long, we're going to see some savings.
Yeah. So from where would, where the money come from? I mean, I realize we have our own sewer account. Would that come from reserves?
Yeah. Yeah. So we're going to, uh, we'll take it out of the this year's budget and anything that goes over the budget will come out of reserves after we've calculated the chemical savings and power savings and power generation savings. So we're hoping not a lot comes out, but if it does, that's what you have reserves for is to make sure that you can bring your plant up to spend.
It's doable. No, it won't.
Yeah, we're, we're not going to have the money. We're not going to be financially in trouble. No.
No, and it's a good note to, to the point you said about the meters continuously spinning backwards right now. Important note on that, we had previous to the project initiating. So this is already out of date numbers by a couple of years here because this is back when we were first engineering it. We were spending in excess of $200,000 a year in electricity just for the sewer plant. So now that we've got this generating what we need and then some, that right there is yet another layer where we'll, we'll be able to really substantially balance that operating budget. It's, it's fantastic timing.
Any questions?
Speak, yeah.
I, I almost feel as though we're privileged to have a sewer plant. No, no. There's no alternative.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this? Nope. All right. Then can I, do we have any more questions? We kind of got off. All right. Then can I have a motion on this one, please?
I'll move approval of the item.
I second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. All done. And our next item tonight is a settlement agreement and stipulation for entry of administrative civil liability order at the wastewater treatment plant. This item will also be presented by our Chief Plant Operator, Matt Anderson.
Okay. So this next one, um, the violations that happened or that occurred prior to me for several, several different things. Back in March, we got a letter from the state basically saying that we had to, you know, come up with $36,000 of violations that happened from right previous from February till December of 24. So it was all last year. Since then, we have not violated. Not even in the least. So I've got the plant under control. With this stipulated order, instead of paying the state the $36,000, I'm requesting the council sign off on us doing the stipulated order that allows me to get that $36,000 put back into the plant and instrumentation to help us avoid a lot more of the violations that we've had. So this covers an influent pH meter that this sewer plants currently does not have. And it should have been one of the first things that that was installed. And an ammonia meter, um, because we do have ammonia violations. And this would basically help me not violate on ammonia.
Do we have any comments from the public on this one?
It's 36, it's, I need to sign off for $36,000 from them that instead of paying the state the 36,000, we put the 36,000 back into the plant.
Yeah. Yeah. So every now and again, we get really lucky with the state water board and they give us a little bit more forgiveness, which I'm always very grateful that they're willing to give us more forgiveness after the 60 years of turmoil we've been in together. And what they'll do is they'll offer, instead of having to pay a fine, that'll go off into the state's coffers and disappear from our visibility. They'll offer us the opportunity to remediate the issue forcefully in lieu of the fine, which really I think is a fantastic program they have to really fulfill the intent of the fine in the first place, as opposed to just punishing without resolution. So.
Right. So do we have any other comments?
I apologize for interrupting here. Can you, can you clarify the amount that you're asking for in the resolution?
So our fines total of $36,000.
And then it's, so it's the same thing. We're going to do $36,000.
So.
I, I think we added tax and license and there I made a guess at 43.
Okay. So I think we're authorizing 43.
Okay.
And that's the total cost in lieu of a $36,000 fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
I thought 43 number there and I was confused. So I appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Connor. All right. Does any other council, do the council have any other questions or comments for Matt? All right. Then can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
And a second? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, Matt. We appreciate your time.
Thinking of that old oil filter commercial where the mechanic said, you want to pay me now or pay me later?
That's right.
So I like paying now.
From the last two of these, you shouldn't have any more violations getting forward.
Yeah, knock on wood.
I'd never let leave.
Yeah, no, no, Matt. Fantastic job out there. Like you said, there's been zero violations. And saved us money all over the place and we appreciate you immensely. Thanks. I appreciate it, Matt. Have a good night. All right. Our final council business for this evening is a report from the Sierra Vista Community Center Ad Hoc Committee, which are Larry and Trinity. Can you please present your report?
Standing watch, Mike. You want to please?
I can start. Yeah. We had a good meeting with a couple of members of the Sierra Vista Center Board. And we're visualizing an agreement that's much larger than some small MOU that has to do with, ultimately, we'd end up changing a legal trust agreement that would be almost impossible because it already sets a lot of the things in stone and not to be changed. But to, uh, one of the items, for example, would be the city would work on an emergency plan. So the city knew when and who to contact when various things come up. And we spoke about a calendar. They're open to that. We agreed to provide them a draft of how this agreement would start out. And we haven't done that yet, but that will be coming soon. But again, not just a, a minor agreement that this is so and that's so, but something more cooperative because cooperation between the Sierra Vista Center and the city has been lacking, to say the least. There's been a lot of legal arguing and lawsuits and it's really hard. So we're talking about starting over and a good relationship going forward. And the second thing I'd like to say is that the group that asked for money for basketball, I would like to separate that from the MOU because the MOU is going to take a while and it's larger and it's complicated. And that group is ready to start now. You know, they, they need, uh, let's see, they had asked for $5,000 and we didn't have 5,000. I think we gave them 2,200. So I would like to invite them to come back to this meeting and ask for the other $2,800, but not tonight.
And that's separate from the facility mitigations.
Yes, we'd like to separate the two. They were kind of connected at our meeting a month ago, but better to separate it.
And so, you know, the way that I had kind of framed it, um, when we talked with the community center folks who agreed to meet with us was, you know, we've been in this marriage a long time. And, you know, sometimes it's great and sometimes it's terrible and we're on the verge of divorce. And then we go through separation court and then we get back together again and it's super toxic. And so with that being said, you know, the intent of the MOU when we first brought it up was, you know, if we're going to go back into the whole marriage of giving people money, we need to have a prenup in place. Well, you know, why not take a look at our general. you know, why not take a look at our general relationship as it stands? Look at the other aspects of the monetary agreements that have all been handshakes for so long and let's get it all in writing. Let's, let's set the terms of our relationship and how we interact with one another and how we do business together so that it's not word of mouth passed down from one person to the next. And then that way too, when we subsequently have turnovers of our council and turnovers of their board and, and, and all of those different changes of relationship that we at least have a base document that says this is what it will look like. And if you want to deviate piece of documentation that follows it. That way we have a clean paper trail and we don't continue to have disputes over, you know, access, money, communication. You know, all these things that are very preventable with just simply putting things in writing and being transparent. Um, and so it seems like that's the one thing we all agree on is we want to get along together better going forward. And we want to make sure that in both, both parties, one being the city and one being the Sierra Vista Community Center Board, we both share a mission to improve the lives of the people who live here. And what better way to do that than make sure we're on the same page about how to accomplish that together? So um, one thing that would really help Larry and I with providing a draft to them, since they have asked us to kind of, you know, consider some of their four uh, previous grievances in the scope of all of this. Is I, I had asked the Sierra Vista Center Board to please provide us basically a, a what would you like to see list that involves three categories? Absolutely must have, absolutely cannot have that happen, and it would be really nice if. And if we can get those three categories of things, you know, recorded down, we can at least get a negotiating point started for, okay, what can we agree to? What can we try to work in here? What would the terms be? And what do we need to make sure we're respecting to stay away from no matter what? I would ask that the council please consider that as far as what you think the relationship with the Sierra Vista Center should look like. The absolutely must haves, the, it would be nice if we could figure this out and we need to avoid this at all cost. Um, and if you could send that to the city manager and anyone else who has the thought and to our staff for consideration. Um, you know, and then we can go to, back to that conversation with a lot more input uh, to make sure that we're coming up with a draft that doesn't require too many revisions, but we're expecting this is going to be a rough version to start with and we'll go from there.
Right. And it would pretty much have to be done in a way that doesn't violate the legal agreement that's in place.
Right.
Because that takes a, takes a two thirds majority in three different groups. And I mean, two thirds for us means four people. Same with the B and Kany board and the same with the Sierra Vista Center Board. It takes a pretty strong majority in all three places to change that. So we would shy away from that.
And then the follow up ask to that is I believe Larry and I had agreed that we would meet this Friday with the community center board. So if we, if you guys have time to put some thoughts together for staff before that, we'd like to put together sort of an initial draft. It's going to, you know, be very squishy at first. Um, I would like subsequently at the next available council meeting that we can to put a closed session item on for negotiation. Contract.
Okay, that's not a
There's definitely a real property aspect to it for sure. Um, which I'm, I'm happy to sit down with you and make sure that we can do it and it's all on the up and up, but um, I want to make sure that we can kind of sift through it with anything that may have, you know, inner workings with any other city business that we don't want to conflict with or any other legal documents we don't want to conflict with, because we definitely don't want to create a situation that's asking for litigation. We, we just want something simple that's going to guide everybody and make things a lot easier.
Um, Councilmember Bruce, if, if I, we can take this offline if it's more appropriate. My recollection of this issue was that the council had approved 2,200 in nonprofit funds on the condition we enter into an MOU for access to the building.
Uh, there was a $20,000 request that was put on hold pending that negotiation.
Okay. I, I guess um, just so I, I have my facts. What happened to the request for 2,200?
The nonprofit that came in had asked for two different and they had asked for a separate infrastructure request to do improvements to the Sierra Vista Center. The infrastructure request was the one we put on hold. The first request, we said, we have $2,300 in the profit and, you know, in our fund at this time. And we can allocate that to you at this time. Larry would like us to revisit it to see if we can meet the full the, the, the gap there in that $5,000 request that we underfunded before.
So the 2,200 was given to them?
To the basketball.
Yes, that's in their hands, I believe. I believe they, I think it's 2,200 they have already. And then another point is that um, these folks are moving. And they have raised most of the larger amount of dollars, if not all of it already. So they're ready to go. You know, the backboards are there already. I mean, they have the funds to do most of the work. So.
And the non pro, and uh, that's important too. Now that you mentioned it, the Sierra Vista Center as a show of good faith has also started on some of their own infrastructure mitigations to get this going with their own funds um, is my understanding. So you know, they're definitely really committed to this. They just have basically asked that we expand the scope of this discussion to really consider all of what it looks like to, for us to work together.
And then the last, revisit what I said in the beginning, uh, for this last 2,800 or whatever it is. I would like to separate that from the MOU. Because that donation really isn't going to the Sierra Vista Center. It's going to a private group that wants to do kids' basketball. So it's sort of connected, but because they have all the funds already to do all the work and start their program, this is just a matter of finishing up that $5,000. So.
So is there, is there a request to agendize that for the next meeting? The, the 2,800 to the um, is it Sierra Sore?
Yeah, I, I was, I was going to bring that up like good of the order, but now is better. So yes. We would like to agendize that.
So there's a request to agendize a grant of 2,800 to Sierra Sore. We're no longer doing an MOU for access until further notice. And the ad hoc committee is negotiating an agreement with the Sierra Vista Center. Is that all about right?
It's still, still technically within the realm of MOU. We just don't know what the final format's going to be yet.
Okay. I mean, it'll only go as far as both sides agree to. So it's going to be, it's going to take a while.
So right now we're scoping.
I appreciate the update.
So my question for you. About things that we would like to see the Sierra Vista Center do and ways we would like to see the city be able to support them. You know, everything from running programs or, you know, truly it kind of a, this is what we would like the community center to become and how, and how we would like to see it being supporting the community. I, I just don't know how detailed you are thinking.
Well, it could, it could really go, sorry Larry, it'll, it could really go to any level um, of what is truly at the core of what's important. From a city council perspective, what I'm mostly looking for, because an MOU being a memorandum of understanding, it's supposed to dictate how we interact with one, one another. You know, whether it be when tax dollars are provided for a project or whether it be when access is provided to the city. Or um, even in circumstances of, you know, the sewer billing, when are subsidies allowed and for how much and under what conditions? Um, you know, are there limitations? Are there expectations of the city prior to us using the facility during an emergency? Um, you know, there is a very broad category of what that relationship looks like. And that's really the terms I want people to think in is if we were writing a prenup for a marriage between the city and a nonprofit to work together going forward, what would have to be an absolute must have in that agreement? What would have to be absolutely forbidden or not allowed or avoided? And, and what would be really nice to have, but is not necessarily a, a must have priority? And you know, I, I can see people going a lot of different ways with that, but that doesn't make that invalid. It's just more material to work with.
Okay.
And I just visualize a partnership between different organizations, you know, not emerging. They're all separate already. Be impossible to break that up, even if we wanted to. But yeah, to, to start over again and, and put all the bad blood behind us.
Let's stop behaving poorly and, and just come to peace with where we are now, accept each other for what we are now and find out what that relationship's going to look like going forward.
And they have a willingness to share that facility anytime it's needed, providing something else isn't there. We would get that in writing, but the agreement is there and it's always been there. And then the one time that it didn't work out during the winter storm basically is because.
And we got it worked out.
Yes. The communication lines hadn't been established ahead of time. So establishing them in the emergency took a lot of trouble and this agreement would put all up in place beforehand.
All right. Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this one?
I'm also happy to talk to people offline. It's obviously a very uh, I could talk all night about it, but I don't want to keep everybody online forever.
Okay. All right. So we don't need a motion, but we all know that we're supposed to be brainstorming and sending an email in to Ron so we can put something together for your meeting next week.
It'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay. Fantastic. All right. So we are at good of the order. Kim, what have you got for us?
Okay. Um, most of us were at the dinner about 11 days ago at the community center. And it was almost standing room only, which uh, reminds me that every time there's some kind of an event there, especially with food involved, it's popular. So we can easily turn that into a, a monthly something, anything to get the community center back on track. Uh, the other thing is I went to, I was invited to a dinner last night uh, down in Roseville, Escotan. And I happened to be sitting next to uh, a state lobbyist and he didn't know much about Colfax. So I invited him up here. So you never know when you're going to bump into somebody that could be helpful. Uh, so I'm encouraging everybody to, uh, if you have spare time, go out. You never know where it'll lead. And
well, just want to state my general excitement for the possibility of all those contracts in this town. That would be so incredible. It would put us on the map. And then the second thing is, and, and I don't want to steal his thunder. I thought he was coming tonight, but my friend Jim Bowers, he's the one responsible for the shadow art in town. Uh, he's in the Guinness Book of World's Record for a clock that he built at Burning Man. He was commissioned by Burning Man to do art projects and, and he's a really brilliant guy. And he has an idea for downtown Colfax that I really like. Um, I don't want to steal his thunder, but I would say this. It would also be in the Guinness Book of World Records. And it involves a train. And it's not that expensive. And again, not just involve the Guinness Book of World's Records. He, he's cleared this project already with them. And they said, yeah, this, this would be a world record. So anyway, I hope he comes again for the next meeting. I'll get after him, but he's, he's a brilliant artist and has some great ideas and and this one would be again iconic and it would draw people downtown to see it. And I, if I fail to mention it already, it involves trains.
That was cryptic. Um, all right. So is Jim going to come in and, and present this?
Yeah, he was going to come tonight. It's, it's hard for him to get around now.
Yeah.
He said that i- in his mind, is he, he's got it all designed already. This would be his legacy.
Is Foxy helping him? Maybe she could come report as proxy.
He would need a fair amount of help. Yeah. This is, this goes beyond.
Yep. Proxy's, proxy's always been really good about helping him with that kind of stuff. So um, that'd be great if they could come tell us the, the big secret. Um, so I, for good of the order, I had two items. One, well, they're kind of related. So one, um, the next meeting we have scheduled, regular meeting for the 25th. Larry, are you planning to be out of town on the 25th?
I will be out of town.
Okay. I am also going to be out of town for surgery. Um, and so I'd like to ask if the council wouldn't mind that we potentially re for August, of August 20, the week of the after. I mean, the week before is next week. So ideally, you know, maybe do it the following week. Um, just because we do have some items that me and Larry have brought into the agenda that we care about. I also separately, but related to that, um, I am currently on intermittent FMLA from work. Um, I don't want to publicly disclose all the details, but um, I may need to take some kind of intermittent leave as it relates to council duties. Um, and I want to bring that up to the council at this time, just because obviously some of the stuff's been going on all year and people have noticed my absence as a result of having to deal with these items. So um, I want to make sure that the council has given me the clearance to potentially either, you know, be attending remotely through giving my location. Um, or just awareness that I may have no choice but to be absent to address, you know, family matters. So I don't know if the council would like to discuss that on the next agenda. But uh, it is important though that it be brought up here. So Connor, I don't know what the right protocol is for that, but.
I'll, I'll take a look. Um, I'm not sure we can cancel the meeting per se, but we can certainly move those items to a special meeting if that would. If that's something the council wants to do. And in terms of your requirements to participate in the meetings, I simply don't know, but I will certainly look into it. And we can work with you on a solution to that for sure.
Thank you. On my end, we, remember we have our farmer's market tomorrow. There was a, I'm sorry, turn my, don't forget to turn my own speaker on. Um, so the farmer's market is tomorrow night. You had a soft opening today for our newest business in town right next door. So Coco's Creamery and Candy is officially open at this point in time downtown. So make sure you come in. Well, they were open today and as far as I know, he plans on being open all week from what I can tell so far. So there might've been a couple of people on this dais who walked in with ice cream. Just saying. Um, we do have the Lions uh, car show, their art and art walk and car show is happening on Friday. Um, this is their second to last one. Um, and other than that, that's all I got. You got anything for us, Connor?
Uh, none of the top my head.
Ron?
Uh, nothing to add.
Oh, that's what, we forgot. There's a salsa contest. If you guys didn't notice, there is a salsa showdown happening the last Sunday in September.
Salsa dance or salsa foods?
Food.
Okay.
Food. Yeah, no, we're not dancing. No, no dancing. There are, and so you can sign up at the wrecking crew. It's free to enter. Um, and it is going to be a fundraiser for next year's uh, 3rd of July. Um, so you'll get, it's a $10 to come and taste all the salsas when we do it. And you'll get to vote for your favorites. And they are doing four categories. Red, green, fruit and spicy. And you can enter as many categories as you want. So that is happening. Make sure you stop in at the wrecking crew and get signed up for that one. And for the, it's the last Sunday in September that we're doing that one. So um, do we have any comments on any of our good of the order? Nope. Y'all are so quiet. All right. So we're going to close this part right here and we're moving into closed session, which means we appreciate y'all. But you get out. 7:10, I did it for you.
Let's take a public comment.
Oh, okay. Do we, I apologize. Do we need to take, do we have any public comment on the closed questions items? Nope. All right. There we go. Here, we'll do it again. We're adjourning now. Yes, we're journeying for our closed session. Thank you guys for coming.